I hate to interject, this is Tyan. The owl is muted and we cannot hear you.
Thanks, Tyan. Should we redo the pledge for everybody?
Sorry, I couldn't find the unmute button. Yes, you're all good. Thank you.
Thank you for telling us.
Barbara is definitely technology challenged.
All right, roll call. Your all-star councilor is present this evening. We'll get started first with a public hearing for our active duty military, active-duty military personnel vehicle access tax exemption ordinance. And this was an ordinance that the council took up as, took up recently. I'm going to resonate with this suggestion and decided to move forward with it. Barbara, thank you for making the amendments to the date, the timeframe and the draft that's out there. Is there anyone here from the public that has anything they would like to speak about for this ordinance? All right, anyone, the council?
I contracted Barbara today and I think we found a place to put it. So 51, 52, or 53, something like that. But anyway, there's a chapter available to plug this in.
Okay, great.
And it's not, for those anybody who's looking in who wants information, that the chapter is not stated on the draft we have in front of us, but it will be installed next month by the council.
Thank you. One point that I just wanted to bring up more process-related. So I know, Barbara, we needed me to amend the ordinance with the, you know, it is an active 30 days from the date when we, those, what am I trying to say? We vote on it and 30 days later it becomes black. But then there's the additional piece that you're, that you mentioned, and I'm jumping ahead a little bit into our agenda, but the new registration versus renewals and how we need some type of language in there that kind of clarifies that. I think we can talk about that later, but my question is, if we were to further amend this, do we then need to have another public hearing?
Not unless you make substantial changes.
Okay, all right. Thank you. We can talk about that later. We'll get that in our agenda.
I think we can, for the purpose of public hearing, we can describe what it is.
Yeah. So for the purpose of everyone on the phone here, so the BMV recommends that we include language, talking about whether these just apply to new registrations versus renewals. For example, if all new regis, new registration process after the effective date of the ordinance are eligible, and all renewals due after the effective date of the ordinance are eligible. So it's just kind of narrowing down or being a little bit more explicit in the ordinance or two. What specifically we're talking about, we all know that a new registration is a little bit different from a monetary standpoint than a renewal. Just being more specific in the ordinance itself is what we're talking about. Any last chance, any questions, comments from public or the council? We will then close the public hearing. Thanks, everyone. Moving on to our normal business, first item approval of the minutes from January 11.
Motion to approve the town council, January 11, 2022.
All second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? All of them here to aye, duck.
Aye.
Done.
Aye.
That's a good spot, yeah.
Aye.
Now I vote aye, motion must be aye. Thank you.
No coverts.
No coverts today. Next, we have the Board of Assessors from January 11. Any amendments that anyone suggests for this one before we take a motion? No amendments, no motion.
Yeah, I'll move to accept the Board of Assessors for January 11, 2022, second.
Motion in a second. Voting duck.
Aye.
Done.
Yes.
Okay, five, duck.
Aye.
Now I vote aye, motion must be aye. Next, we have special, town council special council meeting from January 18.
And chair, we accept the town council special meeting minutes from January 18, 2022, ever.
Second, any discussion on this one? Okay, voting duck.
Aye.
Done.
Aye.
Okay, five, duck.
Aye.
Now I vote aye, motion must be aye. And with that, next we have the treasures warrants, January 20th, and the amount of one within the $8,566.15.
Then chair, I move to sign the treasures warrant, the amount of $188,566.15 dated January 20, 2022, second.
Motion in a second, any discussion? Right, duck.
Aye.
Done.
Aye.
That's a good spot, duck.
Aye.
Now I vote aye, motion must be aye. That stuff is done. We have our first and presentation. And I don't know if you want to go ahead and introduce.
Yep. Madam Chair, members of the town council, I'd like to introduce Lynn Martin. Lynn is the owner of Safety Compliance Services, where she goes around and provides safety support and reviews of safety operations and Bureau Labor standards for municipalities. 16 years, she runs her own business. She's got prior history with this, and I'll kind of turn it over to her. She's been here since Monday. I've been here today and will be here tomorrow. The first part of having one come down was to have her come down. When we got the inspection from Maine Department of Labor, initial inspection was just a spot check, surface kind of thing. They kind of just hit certain things. So beyond that, we're correcting those violations now. We knew that we had a lot more to do. So that's the purpose of bringing Lynn in. Lynn was told to come in with a fine truth phone, go through each department. She's going to go back, she's going to create the list for us, send those down, and then we'll get those out with department heads. They can use and call her as consultants. She can get form, she can recommend training, she has policies all pre-made, and help us with that. So with that said, I'm going to turn it over to Lynn, let Lynn kind of give you a five-minute kind of down and very about what she does and what her business is.
Thank you. Thank you very much for inviting me down. It's been a pleasure working with the staff. Yesterday, today, I had an opportunity to work with Jen and Tim. And I worked yesterday some with Heather, and I've also been working with Dawn. I've met with several department heads, and they are very eager to be on board with what needs to be done moving forward as well as correcting what was identified from Bureau Labor. I feel your pain. I have sat where you sit. I was a selectman for nine years and I was a county commissioner for four. So having been sort of in all of the public sector and circles, and then working very closely with Bureau Labor, when I was a selectman, that was when all of this was identified to me. We were inspected and we were looking at over $24,000 worth of violations. We didn't have things in place. So I went, met with Bureau Labor and said, how do we move forward with this? So from there, basically, I created a manual that would help all of the entities in the municipality to comply with what is required of them based on Bureau Labor's recommendations. From there, I created some worksheets, check sheets, things that they could use to maintain and monitor the items that were necessary. So moving forward, what I'm recommending here is, as I said, I met with them, we looked over the list from Bureau Labor. They're all working very diligently to get those accomplished. Some things will, they'll need an extension on because there are things that require a little more time, and a lot of the policies and protocols, we need to just look over closely. What we're finding pretty consistent in a lot of the departments is the record-keeping. They're all aware that they've done some of the training at some point, but trying to find the documentation seems to be the real pattern in all of these departments. Therefore, a lot of the things are going to need to be redone as far as training. Then once we get those things squared away, then we can document that things are done and move forward with that. I also did a walkthrough today in Public Works and just identified things above and beyond what was identified. They're very eager to do whatever they need to do to move forward with safety. Tomorrow, I'll meet with Transfer Station. I found it interesting that just taking someone's mindset and making them aware of things. By the end of my walkthrough with Public Works, they were identifying things themselves. Things that they had seen and been seeing but didn't see until, you know, all of a sudden they just had a different approach. So that's, that's really good news. That's really proactive. So my recommendation is we're just going to continue to move forward. The ones who need programs and protocols, we'll put those in place. We'll contact various entities, whether it's Safety Works, you get some training scheduled for the individual departments. We'll document everything. And, you know, I think once everyone sort of gets an understanding of what their requirements are, what's needed, they're all very eager to move forward. They have a really nice group of employees that I've met. So open it up if anyone has any questions for me.
Madam Chair. Lynn, right?
Yes.
Yeah. The, does your work extend to levels of hazard communication and hazard awareness?
Yes.
And SDS-type activities and material storage? Different things that comes to my mind, not from here but from outside. Like, there was one contractor I was working with that simply does not store paint at all, anywhere, anywhere. If you open a can of paint, take one brush out of it, it goes. As far as that, just that conservative storage piece and, you know, storing the WD-40, it's very clean. But if you into that kind of level of awareness.
Yes, because, because that is part of Bureau Labor's requirements. You certainly have to have SDS book in every department, and you need to have the sheets for anything that you have that you store in your facility. So what I, you know, what's, the general rule for me is, you know, we look around, certainly Public Works is the department where they just seem to, you know, acquire so much stuff. So we just say to them, okay, you know, this is stuck to the shelf. How long ago did you last use it, you know? So go through what you have here, and if you're not using it, you need to not store it here. You, you know, have on hand exactly what you need, have SDSs on it, have the new SDSs, and know how to look up the information on them in the event you need them. So, you know, trying to just really streamline what is absolutely necessary to have in the facility and go with that.
No questions? Okay. Any questions for you?
No, Lynn's really done a great job. She's identified, you know, a lot of the stuff that needs to get fixed and corrected, which, like I said, we're going to move forward with. The goal is that, I'm hoping that we can really accomplish most of this while all the staff and trainings over throughout the summer, and then we'll, we'll report back to you by fall where hopefully close to being almost compliant to where we need to be and prepared for an actual inspection. So that's my hope. It doesn't mean that's going to be successful. That's just a hope. So I wouldn't hold it to that date in time because we seem to get bothered down with other stuff. But I do appreciate Lynn coming down, and I want to, you know, Heather was certainly involved, she was doing a bunch of this. So this comes under Jen's auspices of direction, so you know where it's going. Jen's kind of in charge of, this is one of her departments. Heather is actually administering the program for the paperwork, and Dawn's working with her. And sort of, there's two people always there. Then the department heads are actually held accountable for their line and their staffs at their department levels to implement policies, make sure all the paperwork gets done and gets moved. So now you know how we're doing it, you know what we're doing, and you know how the plan is, we're going to get it accomplished going forward. So I'm hoping that as the summer comes into the fall, that we'll be successful in saying we're much better off than when we started.
Madam Chair, there's one other topic I wanted to bring up that I can, when the police department moved a mile and a half that way to where downstairs, I think Barbara brought it up, but you know, when we're sitting on top of the police department, we have a level of security within this building that we're pretty good about it, but that's not the case anymore. We're converted schoolhouse. And it comes to my attention that we don't have a, any kind of alert or a call button in case of emergency. And does that fall within your office? I think we're off the subject about Department of Labor compliance.
Right.
But it is a piece that I think that we need to address because if something's going on here, it says a meeting in here and something goes wrong with it, you don't know. Barbara doesn't know. But if you cross any, any of these walls and any of these corridors, there's a, there's a point where someone could kind of be able to go like that and alert the rest of the staff that something's going down.
Part of, part of your emergency action plan that each department has is how to identify emergencies. How to best go about doing that. As far as, you know, a security system, that would certainly be a conversation, you know, with your police force on how best to come up with a security system, whether it's, you know, your doors are coded. But in your emergency action plan, it's written out, you know, in the event of an emergency, you know, where do you go? Who's accountable, you know, those types of things. But as far as securing your building, that certainly would be a administration, industry.
Something to think about as we go to the bus stop, because, you know, regardless of what we do to the building, I think it's needed as a place of operation. Rest of the council, right? Just kind of a important piece.
Thank you so much for bringing it to my welcome. No other representation, right? I'm making a public comment. Is there anyone on Zoom that wants to speak something that's not on the agenda? I see Pat raising her hand.
Yes. Yeah, hi. I just want to remind people that the Big Night, can you hear me?
Your address.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's 46 Brattle Street, and I'm also speaking as Conservation Commission Chair. I just want to remind people that we are sponsoring a webinar Wednesday night, six to seven. The library is hosting it. It is with Greg LeClaire. He's the main wildlife biologist. And the main Big Night Coordinator, so he will be talking about amphibians and how they cross the road and how we can help them cross the road. And so you can get the link to the Zoom meeting on the library website. And, and it's posted on the events page of the town website. So we'd appreciate as many people coming as they have time for. Thank you.
Anyone else on Zoom have any public comments? Abby? Go ahead.
Hi, Abby Sherwood, 51, Tamarack Drive. Not to beat a dead horse, I had a question again about the ice rink. Thank you so much to the volunteers, the rec department for setting that up. It's been packed. I drive by it all the time. We've been there a few times, but it's really being used and it's very much appreciated. The light is up, but it hasn't been on yet, and I've actually been asked by a number of other people as well when the light was going to be installed. If it is installed, or what the hours are going to be.
I will find out. I, I'm going to light this up. Jen will follow up with you, Abby.
Thank you. I appreciate it. And it's even bigger this year than it was last year because of the, there's some ice run over, so well done.
Thank you, Abby. Anything else? All right, anyone else on the phone? All right, we will move into your commentary and your report.
Well, I can just tell you the three things I've been doing since last meeting. Budget, leave a negotiation on personnel issues. That takes care of everything I've done. Just kidding. Seems like that, but certainly. Highway building update, the heat's installed. They put the equipment in the garage, some equipment in the garage this morning. In the springtime, I'm going to work with the water company when they replace the water line in Front Street, they've got the sprinkler system. Obviously, the highway's been busy with winter road maintenance. They've done a great job. I'd like to introduce you to Dawn Merle. Dawn's the new executive assistant that we hired, myself and Jen. She's hit the ground running. Back here again. We stopped her from leaving. She tried several times, but we got her back. She's done a great job. If you need anything and you can't find me or Jen, feel free to just, you see Dawn. She's in the old GA office down the hall, and she'll be able to help you, and if she can't, she'll at least be able to tell you where we're at and get a message to us. We've been having extensive exhaustive meetings with all the department heads regarding budgets. We have worked mostly through operational expenses and are now starting to get into the CIP accounts and working diligently to get that put together. We had union negotiations the other day. We were in negotiations for about three hours, went well, and moving forward with that. The lawn fund for 2021 has grown by $23,371. And 70% of that can be given out, so that leaves us with $16,359 for this year. We'll put up a notice on the website for the application we feel long turned in through the end of February. Our phone system for contractors consolidated is up the end of what, February first month? So we've been looking at bids and different proposals. The one that has now stood out, we're in the final negotiation, negotiation stages with GWI. And a great piece about that is talking about what dropping the bill, $400 a month roughly? Something like that. Roughly 400 a month would be a cost savings. But yeah, upgrading all of our services to fiber, so we'd have much better service with the exception of Transfer Station. She's going to have to stay a copper line. So we hope to have that wrapped up soon. And that would, you know, that would end up being a good cost savings for us. Police Department of the last two weeks had one arrest, five accidents, 84 traffic stops. Sergeant Moore completed a training, Sergeant Upton completed another training. And so the interim chief also completed three trainings, so they've been doing, and it's a training war. The fire department of the last two weeks has had 23 calls. They had numerous calls the day of the storm for trees and wires.
Yeah.
Code enforcement is kind of slow this time of year, which is good, giving Joe a small break. My name is working on ordinance issues and other projects. The library had a writer from South Perwood come and do a presentation on his latest book called At the End of Sasa Street. It's about restaurants and changes in restaurants from 1960 to current. Library heat's still working perfectly, running great, even in the cold weather. So when we started to do the budgets, a couple lines kind of come up. The CMP line, CMP line, the propane gas is way down this year. We're beginning to think we're going to have to watch the cycle, but what we think is because the heating system is finally running the way it's supposed to be. That modite heater in the entranceway has not been trying to run and compensate for low temperature. So therefore, the use of propane is way down, and at the exact same time, the use of that trying to run and that geothermal system using the radiation of the solar, trying to keep that running all the time where that's working right. Where we hope we're going to see a cost saving in CMP. So looking at it today, as we begin travels through the budget cycle, it looks like we might be getting lucky and getting, kind of get the system working, and it's going to start showing the savings that it originally designed years ago. So we're hopeful. We gotta, we gotta go, well, true tale sign will be a year from now. We'll look back at the real cycle. So library heat's running great. Everything's working, had no problem. You want to talk about the home delivery and curbside pickup program?
Yeah, with the Omicron, the library also has been putting out there that they're still going to do home deliveries if people want books or any other articles brought to their home, and curbside pickup is always still available as well. So they're pushing that, just letting people know that, you know, it's available.
Okay, I'm going to have Jen do the rest of it because it kind of hurt the balance, so I'll have her go ahead and.
Recreation, the ice skating rink is up. The highway department helped them set it up, and the fire department went and filled it up. And it is getting a lot of use, like Abby said, so that's great. We love to see that. There was 82 students that attended the last Gunstock ski trek. They already set up their winter mad science, and all the slots were filled up in three days. They actually have a waiting list. They have negotiated with all sports events timer for the strawberry run will happen this year. And Nikki is working with Jay on researching future ice rink options for the warming shed to use the bond funds that they received last year. Assessing is putting together growth estimates for us so that we can move forward with trying to give some estimates on no rates and all that part of the budget that comes a little bit later. Amy has been working on deed changes and sending out sales questionnaires. And Verna is also gathering estimates on launching a GIS system online. She's got three estimates, and we're working through the annual maintenance versus the difference between the vendors. That's something that we want to move forward with.
So Madam Chair, members of the council, I want to tell you about a personnel travesty that occurred just some years ago. It's a horrible story. I'm going to write a book about it someday, but that's another story. So you didn't know, but I'll tell you, that 1998, our town clerk became her, that was, she became certified as a town clerk. You didn't know that? I didn't know that. She continued to work as a town clerk, and that time she became recertified. And to get certified as town clerk, you had to take specific classes such as election classes, learn municipal law, vital records, and do all kinds of stuff. And she did that. She got certified in 1998. That was great. And then she got recertified, taken more training classes, serving in the main clerks association in 2002, and served as a committee member. And we didn't know that. I didn't know that. I didn't know it. And you didn't know that. So now I'm telling you. And that was all great things that she did because she cared about her job. And being a member, I'm a member of the main town city manager association. She's by the clerk association. It's a group we belong to. It's us nutty people that are in our own nutty groups and nutty world. But we feel good in that group, and as we learn, it's a good way to communicate progress through. So Barbara did all of that. But here's the travesty. In 2009, Barbara worked really hard, and in 2009, she attended more required trainings, had been a clerk for 10 years, served on several committees, was chair of the main clerks association nominated committee for 10 years. And in 2009, she earned her lifetime certification award. Do you know that? Did you know that? Travesty. That's a travesty that occurred. So they gave her a paper certificate, and that was wonderful. And she hung it up on her desk, and she went on with her life. 12 years later, they decided to send Barbara an honorable plaque thanking her in certified land. So Barbara, come forward. 12 years later. 12 years later. While we admit it's righteous travesty that occurred in 2009, I want the town council in front of the town council to award the town, our town clerk. And it says, Main Town and City Clerk Association has conferred the distinguished title of Lifetime Certified Clerk of Maine upon Barbara Ann Bennett in fulfillment of their professional requirements and service contributions as prescribed on this 18th day of February 2009. We're correcting it tonight. So congratulations. It's an honor to have you working for us. And here's your plaque you can now put up. Thank you for your service. And now you know the story of the travesty of the personnel issue in 2009.
The former president of the association thought it was appropriate for all of the lifetime certified clerks to actually have something other than a little piece of paper. So that was very nice of her.
Congratulations, Barbara.
Thank you.
And Madam Chair, that's my report. Thank you.
All right, unfinished business number one. We have comp plan update. Our, we saw at our last meeting, we received proposals from three, three different groups. And we have some homework to review them. We don't have any supporting docs for this. I think it's just a matter of, we need to have a little bit of a discussion. Kind of figure out our path forward. Before I get to the council, does anyone from the public that would like to comment on this item? No, okay. Did everyone have a chance to pick a one? Yes.
Anybody need a summary sheet? I can get some thought made if anybody needs one, unless you have.
I've never read the proposals and when I, when I first started, I was hoping in my own mind to get to a point where recommend the looks like, not interview all three, but after I read all three, I'm saying, these are quality people. And for their effort to prepare, I think we should interview all three. And it also brings up the point that we need to get going on, and that is to appoint a comprehensive plan update committee.
Yeah.
That's going to be a key piece moving ahead.
Anything else for me, Jen?
No, I just thought it seemed like they're all quality people. And I think we should come up tonight with a at least a suggestion schedule for interviews.
Anyone else have any of those?
Thank you. So my just quick comment was regarding their timelines and whether or not one proposal has a greater idea of where we were at currently based on the past and the fact of us. So perhaps if we go back out to people to just let them know that there's been some preliminary work completed or whatever, so we can get a better estimate of what they did their time.
I think, and I need to remember, I know for certain, SMTDC is aware of that. They helped us with previous plans. But I can't remember what level of information we provided. And we before last kind of posted in our RFP out there, we didn't provide any other.
What we asked
Yeah, go ahead.
We asked them to respond to a company introduction, company profile, PT members, the project approach. And structural projects and project, and scope of project. And what we asked for was to be responsive to the first two tasks, the first two phases that we saw because we couldn't really, until we get the first two done, which is the background homework. That, that faces, subsequent phases, it might be more than the four that we listed. Might, might be informed to create that schedule. And then at that point, be better prepared to budget. And so as we kind of think through the spring, perhaps we could have a better understanding so that we could be thinking about the the budget for three as well.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I would hope that we can have some at least enough of like a decision or guidance on this topic, so that we can put the appropriate line item into the budget. So we're in now, like your question earlier.
So I don't know if that quite addresses what you're talking about, but.
It makes sense, you know, just understanding, perhaps they still decide a different line item because they may not have what, what they're walking into specifically.
And there are things that are going to come up, like something in the interim that I've done to tie in, the quirks of, it's really helped me today because I, with my comprehensive plan and stuff like that, this document that we approved in 2013, or adopted in 2013, which is the software conservation slash open space plan. Which, to me, rather than having this as a separate document, that this should be folded into a comprehensive plan. So it's, so it's all in one, in one piece. And so, you know, in, in past plans, we've we've had, you know, natural resources sections and things that have to do with conservation, weight items. So there's a big hunt of homework done with this right here on that particular piece. So that'll, that'll be something I would suggest we would add to the task list. So it's not just the comprehensive, comprehensive plan that was adopted by the council in 2008, May 12, 2008. That would also be this document, Conservation Space Plan adopted April 23, 2013. The plan's up in 2012. So it's going to, it's going to be an amalgamation or accumulation of supplemental information. And also, like, the big thing will be the survey. And I dug out actually a copy of the survey and its tabulation of the survey results. Survey results, this is the survey. So I don't have this on.
Yeah, I think that's all good information that we should, we should have home use of that. They also agree to sit down with each group for an interview. So does anyone have any qualms with speaking to each group? I, I wasn't, I wasn't saying that. I was going to agree on you. I sort of like, this is all really great information, but I'd love to chat with everybody. Question, is an interview with each one of these groups, is that something that we would do in executive session or would that be a couple? Interview, I don't have any questions.
It's a public interview as far as I can see.
Yeah, there's nothing, nothing qualifies for executive session. Yeah, just workshop, yeah, yeah. No input, but taking, taking me there.
All right, so let's just to kind of keep them documented, let's, I'll take a listen to regard with different interview with each group. So we have Southern Main Planning and Development Commission, North Star Planning and EFI Design and planning LLC.
Some of them. I think it's not certain. I was suggesting. We're open on the first of February. Yeah, and I just, I'm looking through my paper calendar here. I think we need to get it done earlier than later because from the manager, we have a budget scheduled. It's been taken the first three weeks of March.
How much time do you think we would need with each group?
In the past, Madam Chair, if I made a pass, I wouldn't, I wouldn't do less than an hour. I think if you start asking a lot of questions, get into, you know, if, if you're going to kick off from the RFP, reading the RFP, listening to what Jess was asking, I think if you're going to, if you're going to go through the same process with everyone, what I would, what I would recommend doing this before is whether it comes to us and we craft, we craft a sheet with, you guys submit your questions prior to, or the majority of them. We'll craft them on a sheet so you have all your questions. So you have like a question sheet so you don't randomly sit here so that you have an hour block, you can get it all done. And then they can sell their product and it's not just a sales meeting. That'd be my suggestion. I've seen it work that way. And I've seen the other cases where we just locked, we just met a meeting, we just sat there for three hours and talked about the color of the book.
I was actually thinking 45 minutes.
Or something, something, yeah.
And then leave the 15 minutes so we can take a deep breath and then kick off the next hour with the next, next group. So it wouldn't be a three hour commitment, at least on our part. And but, but schedule 45 minutes.
Yeah. I assume we need everybody on the same night. Would you all work with the three groups to try to see if we can schedule?
Yeah, yeah.
I think if we shoot for next Tuesday night.
That'd be the first.
Yeah, a week from today.
That, that might be too soon to, I think that might be too soon. I, I'm just suggesting. I mean, I don't know with these corporations, what they, what they, they might be able to, we can try it.
Does anyone have any conflicts next weekend or other days? No.
The, these aren't huge companies.
Okay. Well, we can try it. And if the worst they can say is they can't make it, then we'll have to figure something out.
Right, let's, let's, let's be proactive about it. You know, kind of the old thing, but don't delay nothing.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's shoot for next Tuesday the first. Can everyone, can the council be here by six? Like if you have one start at six o'clock?
Question.
Yeah.
I'm up north, so I'll try. But I trust you forward if I'm not here.
Okay.
But I will try to get here, but I'm going to be many hours that way.
Okay, let's shoot for the first, one at six, one at seven, one at eight. And if that day doesn't work for anybody in particular, if there's another day next week that works.
You have commitments in February, I think you said, John?
End of.
End of, okay.
Yeah. I mean, I could zoom in, Jack. I got surgery to my shoulder. I could zoom in from the house.
I got to be mine.
I might be, I might make some great decisions.
Okay, so moving forward, well, let's schedule interviews with each group, preferably next week or whenever they're available, February 1st, the preference.
Well, the planning was being on the second. But that doesn't mean we couldn't use one of them upstairs or
we can make something.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we're, I'm free the rest of the week. It's just Tuesday.
Find something, we have to go find something. So my priority is you want us, you want us, we'll, we shall make contacts, schedule this interview.
Yeah.
Okay.
Madam Chair, if I may, I do know that the Republican Party is having a caucus here on Tuesday.
Are they upstairs?
I'm not sure I believe so.
Upstairs, back, back office, back room.
You know, more than I
I, I can tell you where they
I think we're open.
Yeah, you're okay.
Um, so move forward that. And then as far as questions, I think that we can all, I like the idea, Tim, of like kind of combining all the questions together. If each of the counselors can submit any questions that we might have for each of any of these groups, just over the next few days, via email to Tim.
Or Jen, either one.
Or to both of you guys.
And we, well, what we'll do is we'll put that together. So you'll have a working document. So you won't, you know, we'll take out any do, that's, we'll put it all together for you. So you'll have, read something and you can piggyback off that.
Great, okay. Right, so homework for the council. Think about questions, send them to Tim. Right. Anything else on this topic?
Madam Chair, I just have a quick question regarding, like the order of operations. So we have a contract planner and typically what a planner be like the point person for the comprehensive plan update, does that fall to Tim in the, in our current situation or who is kind of like spearheading that?
I would think, and, and I've never done this before, but I would think that we would designate one of us to kind of like earmatch everything. I bet I don't say that, our place.
What what we're hiring these people to do is to facilitate. So there'd be a, a prime contact with the firm who would be dealing with the committee. Counselor appointed that you know, we go off and the scheduled events that happen as a result of it. So this, it's, it's not not like we'd be using the same coordinator from planning. Matter of fact, David isn't mentioned in the proposal from SN EDC.
Right.
It's me, Ray, Paul, and a couple others, but, but David's not even.
Madam Chair, so yeah, in answer to that, normally what happens, you're right, as a planner, in the absence of a planner, and how I've dealt with in other communities, I'm a point of contact for resource information, communications, delivery of, of anything else. The chairman, whoever, like Jack said, whoever becomes the chairman of that committee is a standing committee off of your authority. And that's the chairman who would hopefully do reports to the, to the council and so forth. And I can, I, I become like the liaison to the, to the company doing it and the committee and anything else they need for them to tie it into administrability, if they need services or anything like that. More than being, the, the chairman kind of is the one that should be communicating, you know, what's the committee doing? What are they doing, blah, blah, blah? So that's kind of what Jack was referring to is that. So that's normally how it works. That's, so that's where I'll fall. I'm active in it, but I'm more like a liaison. I kind of like sit in the background, help where I can. And, you know.
Pay the bills.
Pay the bills. And if you really ask me to be the, be the chairman of the comprehensive committee, I'd probably run away to take out my mortgage.
Does that help?
It does, thank you.
When, I, I would like to just take up a motion regarding this interview and so we have that documented. So I'll just offer that. So motions to continue scheduling interviews with Southern Main Funding and Development Commission, North Star Planning and EFI Design LLC. Preferably sometime the week of, February, or the week of January 31st.
Second.
A question, a second. I, Jeff?
Aye.
Just get five.
Aye.
Now I go, I, question mark, sorry, here. Thank you both for helping us get in support of this. Of course. On, on the same topic though, Jack, you mentioned the committee. I feel like it probably would be a good time for us to start putting together that I don't remember what you've done in the past, like a committee application, committee charge type of thing to post so that we can start accepting applications. And given that you're interested in serving on that committee, would you be willing to make a start of that?
It's a, it's a call for, for Republican trust.
Exactly.
And if you look at the, the current plan, you listen, look at the rosters and it's tens, if not hundreds of people that are involved, depending on what part of it is. But one thing that I'd like to explore as we get through this is that we're not doing the writing of a comprehensive plan. We're updating a existing comprehensive plan. So it's not going to take a lot of boots on the ground. Is that we're writing a scratch document. I, I hope no one's thinking that this is going to be built from scratch.
Yeah.
Because one danger of that is that you get into a comprehensive plan and it starts going off like in a certain direction. We always have to be grounded to the fact that you know, I'm, you know, we have tried and true ordinances in town. I wouldn't want to do anything that would subvert any of the, and many of them have been tested before. So I, I would not want to subvert any of the ordinances that we have. So we have to be careful to compare. Now, there's, there's things, notable things like you mentioned in the RFP, like in 2000, started in 2003, approved in 2008. Even though medical marijuana was, was legal in the state of Maine since 1999, that was not on anybody's radar that would be doing legislation locally for that. So there's going to be some things that are, that are going to be brand new. But also to be reflective of each other and, and, and not off on a tangent where it basically means another whole big project or say rewrite. Or say rewrite chapter one forty zone.
Yep.
A chapter one twenty-one subdivision, storm or whatever. It's not just a, a danger that I can see popping up.
So, sorry, did it get us back on the committee topic, so I know we want to form a committee of, of residents to kind of be part of this process. And I think we should probably get a start on that, and so, um, I think the first step would be to pull together. Uh, sort of quote, like, language to post that they were accepting applications for this committee. Does anyone disagree with that?
No, we should do it just like we did the, the parking committee or sidewalk.
Yeah, yeah.
Pedestrian safety, sorry, that's the, before Abby yells at me, pedestrian safety committee.
I just can't remember exactly what.
Um, there's, just as a quick question, when are the tax bills going out, because that might be something we want to include, included for trying to cast a very large debt.
It's too late.
Yeah.
Did you do the end of March, reminders should go out the end of.
You're talking about the flyers. I think we have to use our, our website and, uh, and, uh, and word of that sort of thing. And, and any organ that we have, like, like people who are attending, uh, via Zoom.
So, I, I, Jack and Jessica, you guys both seem pretty interested, and so you don't want to be going, uh, pull together somewhere for that posting, we can start to get some public. And just.
Yeah, sure.
Jack, you. If you would like to pass this, that's fine, I'm just trying to delegate here.
The horse is laying down, so we move on.
Yeah. All right. Okay. Anything else on RFP? Uh, next we have solar farm moratorium extension, is there anyone from the public who wants to say anything about this topic? Okay, um, this is on our agenda because our moratorium for, um, solar farms is coming to an end. Um, and the planning board still needs some additional time to work on this, um, Barbara reached out to, uh, me. For me to kind of clarify some of the, um, process stuff associated with this, and they recommend, I'll just read this. The conservative course for extending moratorium would be to treat the extension as an equivalent to passing a new ordinance requiring a public hearing. Um, because it approved the life of the moratorium for an additional time period. Given that, I suggest that at the beginning of our next meeting on the eighth, we have a quick public hearing on the solar farm. Moratorium extension, and then you can take up, um, any action after that in our regular meeting.
Um, usually that's a Phil Sossier thing, uh, he, he's, in the past, he's always done that, all the whereas is. And the dead horse. Make sure with the street legal. Since what we've done in the past.
Do you think we could reach out to Phil in the next couple of weeks and just get, make sure we're buttoned up to extend it on the eighth?
Yep. And, and, you know, we're, we're making progress, it's just that we're, you know, we, we need more time.
Okay. Um, so, any other thoughts or suggestions on that? All right, I'll make a motion, then, a motion to schedule a public hearing, um, for us, our solar farm or aquarium extension. Uh, on Tuesday, February eighth at six-thirty PM.
Second.
Your motion in a second, any discussion? All the, all those in favor, say aye, Jeff?
Aye.
Done?
Aye.
Jessica, aye, Jeff?
Aye.
All of us, aye.
You have the date, it's somewhat, sometime in March, right?
For the, the end date, um.
The current moratorium.
I do.
It's towards the end of one.
Uh, I think it ends. March twenty-third. We still have plenty of time then, um, doing that on the. Um, so then as a result, we'll need to have solar farm or aquarium extension under agenda again, so that we can take action on it. All right, anything else on that one? Next topic, medical marijuana caregiver licensing, anyone from the public have anything on this one? Um, this, I think, is just sort of a, a placeholder on our agenda, um, until this business is racked up. Um, our last discussion, um, involved, um, the recommendations from the planning board, where they kind of need to work through. The, um, performance standards that they're, that they're working on for registered caregivers. And making sure that, that language and the licensing language that we proposed can kind of talk to each other, so I think our, our last update was. Essentially that, that the planning board's working on things, we'll make sure that the language dives for lack of a better word. Uh, I don't think there's any, any one that's one for us.
And just to reiterate, it looks like there's, this, in my view, there's gonna be changes to, uh, chapter one forty. Section nine definitions.
Okay.
Another piece in the performance standards, another number, that's what we don't know what that is yet, and then there'll be changes to.
Yeah. All right, new business, um, possible action on military access tax exemption ordinance. So we have a public hearing on this earlier, um, and in February, I discussed, um, we think we make, um, minor changes to. That ordinance, um, involving the, the specification, using new registrations and renewals. Um, but that's not super, um, those aren't significant changes, so. I guess my only question on that, before we take up a motion, is. I was looking at what we have so far, and trying to figure out exactly where would be the best place to put that. New versus renewal.
On the text itself.
Yeah, like where, what.
Could just be a separate paragraph before section three.
And just kind of.
Also, the end of section two. Another sentence in there. So, but that'd be a continuation, I was mixing that up, but it seems to me that was gonna be just in play upon adoption of this, if we adopt it. Uh, but in, in fact, that could be a nearly thing that we have to deal with.
As far as.
Someone does it, you know.
Correct.
Registration expires. Always be continued, once, once it's in place, it's in place.
Right, once you adopt it, but it's a matter of when, do you want to do renewals, somebody didn't register their car in September. Comes in in March and says, oh yeah, my September cars do, do they get the exemption or not? This language is.
Just, just the two thousand twenty-two, though.
Yeah, it would be ongoing, as long as they provide that form from their commanding officer.
Yeah.
They would get that exemption every time they register a vehicle.
Yeah, but the, the date thing is very relevant for right now, given that this isn't yet enacted.
Right.
Uh, all right, so what did you say, Barbara, under, under section two, another paragraph, we can just insert, um.
Geez, I'm looking at the, uh, recommendation.
Yeah.
After, in, in the third paragraph, second line, after the word when. Would be, the exemption applies to new registration versus renewals. That is, following the registration's process after effective date of the ordinance are eligible, and all renewals after that date, after the effective date of the ordinance are ineligible. Okay, that's essentially what we're saying.
Yeah, we're, sorry, Jeff, where did you say, and?
I'm on the, uh, the business number one, uh, uh, agenda information sheet.
No, 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 I'm talking about in the ordinance itself.
Okay, it's, uh, and section two would be the last par, the last line of section two.
The words is for the purposes of this fiction vehicle has the same meaning as thirty-six MRFA.
Yeah, then there'd be another sentence.
Another sentence that says. All new registrations process after the effective date of this ordinance are eligible and all renewals.
And no, I think goes a little bit up from that. The line says, starts with regarding when, uh, but then the new sentence would be, you know, capital T, the exemption applies to new registrations, et cetera. Presumably rules, that is.
Okay.
That, so we just create a sentence right there, and it is a complete sentence.
All right, so.
And, and we wouldn't include, this would mean so the registration, it's, we wouldn't include that.
Yeah, I know, so what I would suggest is, um, if we're looking at the existing draft ordinance. Immediately above section three, inserting another paragraph there that says the exemption applies to all new registrations. Process after the effective date of this ordinance are eligible and all renewals due after the effective date of this ordinance are eligible.
Saying it, please.
Immediately above section three and the ordinance. The very last paragraph of section two.
Yeah.
Would read, this exemption applies. The exemption applies to all new registration.
Just says to new registration.
I'm reading what, exactly what is the challenge to that.
You reading this?
Yeah, it says all new registration process after.
No, you, you said, uh, well, again, the exemption applies to all the registrations. But the line actually says the exemption applies to new registrations versus renewals, that is, following registrations, process after effective date. So you just added a little all of them, I don't know if it makes a difference.
Would you like to propose the language?
No, 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 just, it just. I'll read it, one.
I'm sure, that's what I just said, too.
Okay, the exemption applies to new registrations versus renewals. That is, following new registrations, process after effective date of the ordinance are eligible, all renewals due after the effective date of the ordinance are ineligible.
I don't think we want to say, I don't think we want to say that renewals do after the effective date of your, that are ineligible, we want renewals after the effective date of the ordinance. Be eligible, right?
Correct.
I think Barbara's point is like, it's January, so if somebody had a renewal that was due in September, and they've just been driving around without the appropriate stickers. Their renewal was due in September, which is not after the effective date of the ordinance.
Yeah, so they would be all.
Yeah. But we're, all renewals do after the effective date of our, our, well, you said ineligible.
I just read very, where it was.
I'm gonna go with, we ought to write this down, because this is gonna get messed up, so why don't we just hold this over until the next meeting?
I think we have the language exactly here, Jack, you, you just said ineligible at the end of the sentence.
That's exactly what it says. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, it says eligible.
I'm sorry, I made a mistake.
All right, so what I'm gonna suggest is the amended ordinance is immediately above section three, at the very end of section two, we'll enter, insert a new sentence. It says the exemption applies to new registrations and renewals. For example, all new registrations processed after the effective date of this ordinance are eligible, and all renewals do after the effective date of this ordinance are eligible.
Thank you.
So, if you all can work together to take that language, that's in the supporting docs to insert into the ordinance.
Barbara, you got that? I'm not sure I do.
Hold this over until the next meeting, because this, this would in fact be the first reading of this language.
We made the first reading of the last meeting.
And, and we had discussed, Barbara didn't feel like there was, that this change was significant enough to warrant a, a, a restart of the process. But I think we could make, we could take a motion at this point to adopt the ordinance that I've amended.
So who?
All those in favor, say, any other discussion? Any, from us, have any concerns with us doing this this way? All right, all those in favor to aye.
Aye.
Sure, aye.
Jessica, aye.
Sure, aye.
Mallory votes, yes, that's five zero, so that ordinance, um, was enacted this evening, January twenty-second, twenty-two. Which means that it will take effect thirty days from now on February twenty-fourth.
Thank you, thank you.
Um, all right, any other conversation on this one?
Madam Chair, I move, we approve the Spring Hill liquor license and special amusement permit. They are a business in best standing with no issues at all with the town.
Motion in the second, any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye, Jeff?
Aye.
Done?
Aye.
Jessica, aye.
Aye.
Mallory votes, aye, must press for zero. And, uh, our next item, we have this number three, possible planning board appointment, um, we're folks going this for our next meeting, because the interview is scheduled with. That ended on February eighth, um, so we have to split them today, so we'll keep that on our agenda for next time. Uh, next we have planning board request for legal review of remote meeting policy, um, so it's a January fifth planning board meeting. Um, at the end of the meeting, the planning board made a motion, um, and it passed, and I think it was unanimous or not, but it definitely passed. But a motion was put out to ask the town council to request legal review of the planning board's remote meeting policy. But this item has been added to our agenda, just so we can take action on that particular piece of business, so. I would, I would just offer up a motion, um, to request, uh, for legal review of the remote meeting policy for the planning board. A request that I filled out here.
So move.
Your motion in a second, all those in favor, Jeff?
Aye.
Done?
Aye.
Jessica, five, Jeff?
Aye.
All of us, aye, was satisfied, zero, um. Tim, I can go ahead and, um, send a note to, to fill in on, to review that, or would you prefer that?
Nope, that's fine, go ahead.
I will, I'll regret the fill-in, I have an action to do that. And then, um, next.
Just, you can just see me on that now, too.
Yeah. Any other conversation on that topic? And this is number five, by West Point, I got nothing on this, so I'm hoping.
That's me. So, one of my exciting issues this last couple of weeks, um, I had a citizen reach out. Kind of complain about why won't we bother his sidewalks, he lives on.
Tamrac.
In Tamrac lane, but at this point, I won't say who. And where it is. So. So, as we move forward. I started the research, started with Jay, and then.
Thank you.
Why, so anyway, um, I started the research, the issue about sidewalks, because I didn't have a clear, a good, real good answer. So, uh, I read the gentleman's emails concerned, why are we doing here sidewalks, when are we gonna get there sidewalks, I said to Jay. Jay gave me a list, he said, well, a long time ago, the council said they made a sidewalk policy, and this is all we're gonna do, these sidewalks, I was like, okay. So Don Chiar, reached out to MMA Legal, and you have their answer from Richard P. Fling, senior staff attorney. So the question was, our municipality's main legally required to maintain a sidewalk in winter time, the answer is yes, they're going to be speaking. And it says of the townway, a road that a municipality is required to maintain is supposed to public easement is blocked or encumbered. With snow, the way must be open and made passable within a reasonable time, state statute quoted. The obligation to remove snow also extends to public sidewalks located within illegal limits, boundaries of a townway. Does not apply to public sidewalks located outside of the townway, such as in a public park, for example, and private sidewalks on private roads. So there's, there's the first out of the equation answer. Then, I said, okay, well, obviously you folks made a policy, so then I went down to Barbara, and Barbara spent hours researching this, thank you, Barbara, doing that. And Barbara came back and said, here's everything I've got, so on two-nine, two thousand and nine, if you look in the second page on the unfinished business. You begin to see the council discuss the amendment. You begin to see the council discuss the amended winter sidewalk policy. Policy's amended. We require the public works on plowed sidewalks and he gives a whole list of streets. Mrs. Karakis, I believe, Jack, you know her?
I know Mrs. Karakis.
Karakis. Made a motion to accept the policy as amended. Mr. Burke seconded the discussion. So they initially voted in the affirmative, but changed their vote prior to the town. The motion accepted the policy, failed the amnesty. On a motion by Mr. Webster, seconded by Mrs. Karakis. It was voted four to one. Mr. Burke posed to drop the policy, leave the issue to men to his discretion. So, as far as I can tell, that's where we're at. So I need, I wanted, I'm not looking for a decision tonight, I'm looking for you to digest, digest this for a minute, and especially if the jacket gone, if you can give me any background around history on some of this. Legally, so then we started reaching out and talking to other towns, all the way from York to San Francisco, Brunswick, to Augusta, and south and north. What do you do with your sidewalks? And I've done a variety of answers and questions. Most places do that, do all of them. And I said, no, that would be some kind of a human nightmare for us to try to do all sidewalks. Staff, we don't have it. However, what's our, what, we, we have towards liability or immune liability. If we pile the sidewalk and someone's walking on it and slips involved, we, we, we're immune from that. That's okay. What I don't know, and what I'd be curious to ask, and I gotta find out. We don't pile the sidewalk and makes someone walk in the street and they stop and fall, get run over. Are we now liable? Because someone's gonna say, they'll stay lawless. On the other hand, for us to do all the sidewalks in the town itself, imaginable or not, would be two more probably sidewalk machines and a couple more full-time people. So.
Minimum needs. So, Jack can correct me if I'm wrong, but at one point, it was all the sidewalks for kids that were walking to school. That was, that was how it was explained back when, right? Anybody that had to walk, they did the sidewalks. But you now have sidewalks in all the subdivisions because they're required. So Black Swan, back acres out by me, the sidewalks going to nowhere.
Right.
We're gonna plow the sidewalk on a cul-de-sac that goes nowhere, but by, by state law.
Well, that's what I, so I'm trying to work out some, something, and with, with your thoughts, not tonight, but your thoughts down the road. As to progressing forward with this in a manner that is reasonable and acceptable. That we, you know, with some legal counsel guidance, and I know probably what legal is gonna tell us. You know, oh, well, that's the law. So I, I talked to other communities and some community said this. They said, no, we don't pile sidewalks nowhere. We pile sidewalks with our kids. We got, the kids gotta get in the school buses. We go and evaluate that each year. Each fall, and if we see, you know, we talk to the school and we pile those. Most of them say things like, well, the sidewalks get done at our convenience as soon as, you know, after the storm. We don't do it, you know. It's not a priority when they can. Uh, so we started looking at it. The point is, I'm, I'm gonna ask for your input. Not tonight, but just be thinking about this because it's gonna come back up for a topic. I do have citizens that are concerned. They are asking questions, and I think this is one of those things where number one, leaving it to men use discretion is not an acceptable answer. That's not cool. I don't want to be talking to you guys from South Wyndham. Because I didn't show, wow, sidewalk.
You're the guy.
Yeah, be like, hey, Tim, how's it going up there? Well, it's not snowing up here, but I don't know about sidewalks. It's all clear. So I'll be looking for that, and I'm gonna need your, your background. So Jack and John, if you have time sometime. Either through an email or phone call or something, can you share with me any information you can remember from this back in your day? And then I want to grab that. I'm, I'm getting information from other communities, talking with Jay. And hopefully, we're not gonna be able to do anything more than what we're doing right now this year. Through all of it. Now we're made aware, we know what it is. The idea is we'll go forward and have the team, you, us, me, the staff. Come up with a reasonable approach for next year that we can push out to the community. Just, I want to put it on your radar, so.
And Chair. This, this has been the topic. Matter of fact, I believe sidewalks are discretionary in terms of subdivision roadway review.
Okay.
The roadway we've just approved and are accepted, uh, based on the recommendation of everybody. Cast, lane.
Yes.
Cold.
Bowling, cast.
Gas farm, yeah.
Yeah, uh, one on two thirty six just up from.
Yeah.
That does not have a sidewalk. It has a painted way so that we can go out there and plow it.
Plow with the trucks, correct.
And, and then, but it, it leaves an eye.
Right.
For someone to, uh, for someone to walk, so, so to walk along. Uh, for example, there was questions years ago. Going back to the eighties in Old Bill. That road was graded, laid out for sidewalks, but sidewalks are never installed. And, uh, I don't know if that was something that went on between Bob. Didn't really call this too.
Centra.
So, 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 anyway, it doesn't matter. Uh, so this has been an ongoing thing and, and I, I, I recall with John because we, in the nineties, we had a uh, a sidewalk construction program where we didn't have sidewalks along Agmanicus Road. And the administration and the council at the time said, well, it makes sense with all the people who live out in Agmanicus Estates, that that be connected. For pedestrians to, to move back and forth from, whether they went off from town to the ball fields or coming in from, you know, a place to be able to connect to town. So we went ahead and, and into that. And I believe that's on our schedule for, for plowing these days. Is that correct?
Yeah, Agmanicus.
But, Agmanicus Road, yeah. Uh, so there was kind of a logic to say, you know, we're gonna plow sidewalks where the people are.
Right.
So we have to get our heads straight as to whether or not, um, not plowing sidewalks in the sidewalks to nowhere, or cul-de-sac subdivision. Or, or even Young Street over here downtown. You know, wisdom back in the eighties, you decided to put a three-foot wide sidewalk down the right side of that road. Now you put a plow down there. You can't do it.
Right.
So it, it can't be, and, and the library, I mean, church was there, you put a library and there, there was a lot of people that, and they still walk, we, we all walk up and down the street, and that's kind of what we do. So the current logic is not to install sidewalks. There's also a strong water piece that goes along with that, so that we're not putting water into, into, into pipes and structures.
Right.
So it's gonna get off, it's gonna go off and have an opportunity to go into the, infiltrate into the side of the road. So that's our current policy, but it would, it would seem like there's an accommodation. Now, maybe the ADA folks in the world would say, no, we can't do this, we can't do that. Cause that, that's another piece to that. ADA compliance, if we start maintaining these, these sorts of things and, but it seems as though, um, that we continue to plow sidewalks where the people are. And then we know we're, we're not buying sidewalks, we're not noticing.
And, and so just what I want to do is put this on your radar. I'm gonna start putting more pieces and get more information, and at some particular point, then we'll leave you to do a workshop and have, I'll put all the pieces for you so you can get this together. We can, we can have a decision. I just want to inform the council. I do not feel comfortable leaving this as any kind of a man, issue of discretion policy, but I'm, I'm not that brave. Uh, so let's, you know, I'm gonna need, we're gonna need a council policy that'll clarify this. They can legally stand up in court, however that ends up. And so in the end, it'll involve some kind of legal support. But I just wanted to give this to you. You at least get the wheels in motion, start thinking, so.
So while, while, while we're thinking about, excuse me, Jack, while we're thinking about that, can you reach out to Jay or yourself and Jeff? I, I got it figured in my head, but get us an idea what another sidewalk, sidewalk plow. Run us because it's just another one of those things we're gonna need to add in. If we're actually gonna do all this, we need to know what the cost is. So, like I said, I got a general ballpark on what one's gonna cost. And the fact that we repair ours about every other storm.
Yeah, so we currently right now plow a total of fourteen miles of sidewalks. Um, so it's seven miles one way, including downtown. So that's currently what we're doing. And most of the sidewalks we clean, pick it up. So we looked at to get another skid or a sidewalk, actual sidewalk machine, about a hundred and eighty thousand. However, we found, Jay went out and found the, the, uh, the skid. Yeah, what's this kid's, the skids, the, the, uh, the little tractor with the tracks on it.
Bobcat.
Bobcat.
Yeah.
Bobcat has one. Uh, it's a little different, and it has tires on it, but it looks like a small miniature Bobcat designed for that for about sixty-six thousand dollars. And that, that doesn't include the back sander, which we figured would be another five, so probably looking for around seventy, we think that would be, and that would be better because that would be one we could drive further down the road than having to shift this.
Yeah.
So that'll certainly, you know, that and we, we talked already about labor, but as I move forward, I want to look at other towns. I've got some information from some towns. I got North Berwick, York, and Kennybunk. But I want to look at other towns, and I also gotta get more defined legal policy stuff. Once I get that, we'll come back. I just want to let you know that I'm gonna be asking for your support for policy on that to clarify this, so.
All good. And Chair, I, I think we also should probably contact Christopher Vasco in her perspective, uh, in terms of how our MS four treatment system would be, would function without sidewalks that they are right now. And there's another approach, I know we yelled at by the audience, where, where it might make sense in terms of what it costs us for stormwater treatment. They actually be thinking about retiring sidewalks. And replacing it with, uh, uh, a no curb situation like we have down there at Old. You know, in terms of, of fixed assets and moving assets. And she's gonna get into fixed immovable hazards as well. I mean, you know, what do we do with a telephone pole that's in a, in a curb line right now? You know, that, that is, it goes and goes and goes and goes.
Well, I guess we gotta, you know, for the best interest of the citizens of the town.
I'd like to know, but actually an inventory or something. Could you just quickly mark, have Jay or someone quickly mark up a map of the roads of the town? And show, just, you know, the market just, you know, where we're, we're plowing, we were not, we, we, well, where the sidewalks exist. And then what we're maintaining and what we're not for winter.
Yep, I have the list right here. We can do that. So just be thinking that that's coming down the road.
Sure, I'm willing. Nice, thank you. That's it.
No action from us this evening.
No action, thank you.
All right, um, thanks, Patrick, counselor, members.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Don.
Nothing, I'm good.
Definitely. I have a few things, thank you. Um, I just wanted to, um, really highlight some excellent local programming. I know Pat mentioned, um, Greg was there at the library. The old Burke Historical Society is also doing an in-person event up at Burke Academy on Thursday about the nineteen fifteen Women's Safari Road Trip. I think it's fantastic to have opportunities for such high-quality programming within the town and also for taking advantage of it. I also wanted to recognize that Friday, January twenty eighth, is the fifteenth anniversary of Data Privacy Day. And Data Privacy Day was created to raise awareness about the importance of respecting privacy, safeguarding data, and enabling trust. I want to say that South Burke has fantastic administrative staff that holds a confidentiality of information to the highest importance. There are privacy protectors, and I want to say thank you to the people on the veteran call right now. Special thanks to Jen, to Barbara, to Dawn, and Jen.
Um, nothing to report on the ski hill. We've had a, a good opening weekend, but it's been the snow. And, uh, so we need to dump.
Coming.
This weekend.
Unfortunately. And then they get to plow the sidewalks again. Hey, I don't have sidewalks. Anyone come anywhere near my house.
I have to tell you, they dug up my driveway this morning.
We did?
Don't worry, when we start selling sidewalks, you're gonna start killing lawns, so those complaints.
Yeah. Uh, the only thing that I had was, at our last meeting, we talked about the temporary stop sign that that intersection, I can't remember the road name.
Yeah.
And I, Barbara had made a point about this, and I just wanted to make sure we were on point with this, but another temporary stop sign, what we do, we are required to have in our ordinance to lift out stop signs. So if they, those become permanent, I think there's some action that the county's gonna need to take to modify that.
We should modify that one, yes.
Just a reminder.
I thought we, I thought we adopted those signs last meeting.
Well, we adopted the temporary. We did not adopt permanent ones.
Are they enforceable?
No.
So I think, I, I, I guess I bring that up to say, you know, are, if we feel like they're going to become permanent. Permanent stop signs, then we, that's, then we should add to our agenda next week. And I don't know if it's too early to say if that was effective or.
Right, I, I don't, I don't even know if we put them up yet, because of the following, sanding and so forth. So, I, the intent was to just try the temporary once in a while, see if it had some kind of an impact.
Yeah.
And then if we found out it did, and we thought it was a good idea, probably late spring. By the time the ground thawed, before we make a permit, we'd have a little bit of time to be there.
Okay, so just, just a reminder that if we get to that point, I want to make sure that we're taking that out of our consciousness.
Correct.
Yes.
And should we install to remove?
Yeah. And, uh, and that's all that I had.
Madam Chair, if we adjourn.
All in favor, hand up.
Aye. I think that's written in the ordinance. We adopt two signs, we have to remove one.